Township of Precipity, Troy Hills. Township Council Agenda Meeting, December 8th, 2015. Meeting called to order by myself at 7:30 PM. Please rise for the flag salute.
Mr. Valori, if you would. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Mr. Krefi.
Here.
Mr. DiPiero.
Here.
Mr. Paluso.
Present.
Mr. Stanton.
Here.
Mr. Valori.
Here.
Others present, Mayor James R. Barberio, Ellen, John Anglacino, Esquire Township Attorney, Ann Amcucci, CFO, Noor Jolie, Deputy Register. The purpose of this meeting is to set the agenda for the regular Township Council Meeting of December 15th, 2015. Formal action may or may not be taken.
Statement of compliance. Adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in accordance with the requirements of the Open Public Meetings Law by filing the notice in the office of the Township Clerk and by posting the meeting notice on the bulletin board at the Municipal Building on January 8, 2015, where it has remained posted since that date. A legal notice appeared in both the Daily Record on January 12, 2015, and the Star Ledger on January 14, 2015, and was forwarded by fax to local newspapers and local radio stations on January 8, 2015. Note Council meetings are videotaped and aired on Cablevision Public Action Channel 21 at 11 o'clock AM on Sundays and are also available for viewing at www dot Precipity dot net.
Okay, at this time we'll be going into closed session, closed session resolution, whereas the Open Publics Meeting Act, Public Law 1975, Chapter 231 permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the Township Council is of the opinion that such circumstances presently exist, and whereas the Township Council wishes to discuss attorney-client privilege and litigation or dereliction versus Township of Precipity, Troy Hills, and personnel matters, and whereas minutes will be kept and once the matter involving the confidentiality of above no longer requires...
And contract issues regarding UPS.
Okay. And whereas minutes will be kept and once the matter involving the confidentiality of above no longer requires confidentiality, the minutes can be made public. Now therefore be it resolved by the Township Council of the Township of Precipity, Troy Hills, that the public be excluded from this meeting. Motion made by myself, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Make a motion to reconvene into open session?
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Paluso. Roll call.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes. Okay, at this time we're going to read the Resolution R. 2015 dash 178 first. Valori?
Yes. Resolution 2015 dash 178, Resolution of the Township Council of the Township Precipity, Troy Hills, setting forth reasons for the adoption of ordinance 2015 colon 26, including minor deviations from the master plan.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Valori, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes. At this time I entertain a motion to open up the public hearing on this resolution and this resolution only. Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Valori. Roll call.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes. At this time I entertain a motion to open up the public hearing on this resolution and this resolution only. Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Valori. Roll call.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes. Okay, if anyone would like to speak on this resolution, you can come up. You'll be given three minutes. Please sign in, state your name.
Nick, I have an extra copy up here. Do you want it?
Okay.
No, this is the ordinance.
Well, they're, actually this is the resolution.
Is this right now on the resolution or on the ordinance?
No, this is, I don't know that you have to open up to the public for a resolution. This is just a resolution.
Okay.
Yeah, no, I think you just adopt the resolution with a vote. You don't open to the public on the resolution. What's going on here is that in connection with the ordinance, the Water View Ordinance, because the Planning Board had found that there are some minor inconsistencies between the ordinance and the master plan, the law requires that the council adopt what they call a special reasons resolution, which sets forth the reasons why the council would be adopting an ordinance that has slight inconsistencies with the master plan.
So the public hearing will be on the ordinance.
You can just go to vote on the resolution, pass the resolution, and then when the ordinance comes up, then there would be a public hearing on the ordinance.
Yeah, we already, you got to vote on the resolution right now.
Well, why don't you, just so the record's clear, why don't you call a roll call vote again, just on the resolution?
Not on this.
And this is just to pass the resolution and then they'll open up on the ordinance.
Ready?
Good.
This is on, Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Nick, you don't get up on this yet. Oh, yeah.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Krefi?
Yes.
Ordinance 2015 colon 26, an ordinance amending and supplementing Chapter 430 zoning of the revised general ordinances of the Township of Precipity, Troy Hills, heading a new article F. 49, establishing an RC-planned retail commercial district and designating certain zone boundaries in the township. Notice for the ordinance above was published in the Daily Record, the official newspaper of the Township of Precipity, Troy Hills, on November 18, 2015. This ordinance was carried from the November 10, 2015 Agenda Meeting. Motion to accept ordinance 2015 colon 26.
Motion made by Mr. DiPiero, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DiPiero.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valori.
Yes.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes. Okay, at this time I'll open up, entertain a motion to open up the public hearing on ordinance 2015 colon 26.
Take a motion.
Motion made by Mr. Valori.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Paluso. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, at this time you'll be given three minutes to speak on this ordinance and this ordinance only. Please come up, state your name, and sign in.
I ask that this ordinance doesn't be amended, that it favors a private economic concern over the benefit of the community, and the applicant will be advanced rather than benefit the community and that it represents a better zoning alternative, rather than it doesn't represent a better zoning alternative. When I heard that we didn't have a retail zone, I found it kind of shocking, because if you look at goal number five in our master plan, we do have retail zones, and we don't need to create another one. I'll give you a little sign here. I guess that's Ten Buck Two or Shangri-La, but that looks like a retail, or a form of a retail zone that we have already. If you do this, you will undermine the other goals in your, defending your community's integrity and character and natural resources. So in short, we don't need another zone, and we also have a standing POD district zone, which was designed specifically for the Troy Brook watershed and environmental sensitivity that's present there, so we wouldn't want to undermine that. So I'll leave it at that and return at a later date.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mary Przycki, 273 Marcela Road. I just have a question on this ordinance when it comes to D buffers, especially Article 5. It almost seems to me that C would contradict A as far as the design of landscape shall be sufficient height to screen parking cars from motors on right-of-way contingent to the frontage of the buffer. And then when you go to C, it almost leaves it to the retail store to come back and say to me, say to this board, the Planning Board and the council, that for legitimate economic functions on the site, they're not making enough money because you can't see their sign or their buildings, we don't want to have the amount of buffer that you put in in that buffer's area on Route 46. So I think it has to be a little bit more stringent to say that the screening has to also blend in with the area, because when you look at the Water View, even when you look at the Water View office buildings, the screening that's there now, the office buildings blend in, where there's this possibility that that's not going to happen, that you're going to see the retail store and the signs and everything else, especially if you allow for the off-site stormwater. If you do accept the off-site storm drain facility, I believe I heard at the very first meeting that you would have to take all the trees down within that island area, that when you're going west and you want to go over to, to go 46 east, you have to do that little circle thing. And if you do that, your screening is totally gone, and there you're going to be looking at a shopping mall that's, you might as well look at the same ones in Wayne. So I think consideration should be made when you have those two clauses.
I spent a few good nights looking over the ordinance, the first one that came out that was sent to me. There are, it's kind of different, but in some respects, but I do agree with Mary on the stuff that she's mentioned. We've gone over looking at some of it. There are other things that I think people are missing. I'm not exactly sure what accessory uses means that you're going to permit off-street parking. Where's that going to be? You know, what is around there for off-street parking? There is, this is a very, very involved ordinance, and I myself am not taking it lightly. The stormwater, again permitted but not obligated. I mean, to me, that kind of wording is just not the right wording. You either do it, you don't do it. To me, we are taking too many chances, and I'm asking this council, this council tonight, not to pass this, please, give it more thought. Read this really, really carefully. I haven't heard any questions being asked of anybody up here, from you guys being asked. So I don't know if you really fully understand it, whether you fully read it, you know? I know it's hard, but I want to know that you guys know exactly what is going on, that there are no little questions. I mean, if we're sitting out here and we see this stuff, I think that puts a question out there that needs really careful consideration, and we're being forced once again to do this as soon as possible. For what reason? I don't know. I don't care. I want it to be what's best for Precipity, not what's best for the developer, not what's best for my friend. I want it's what's best for Precipity. Please keep that in mind. I really think this needs more due diligence. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. I just want to respond to some of your comments. There's been an exhaustive amount of questions that I've asked in closed session and reviewed this matter with my fellow councilmen, with the mayor, with also our council, you know, and as far as the legal verbiage of it, our township attorney is there to review our documents since we're not attorneys. But I will ask one further question of you, John, in reference to the verbiage that, you know, our resident Pat is asking, you know, committed versus obligated. Do you feel the terminology that you utilized in the documents could be challenged, or do you think it's a tight contract? Because that was a question I did ask in closed session that's airtight.
Yeah, I mean, clearly, as you can see just by the sheer volume of the ordinance, I think that the issues are really all addressed. I think that some of the issues that were raised by some of the folks that came up were really more planning in nature, and so I, you know, certainly defer to Mr. Snikus to address those.
Yes, I'd like to hear about it. Thank you.
And hopefully I get all the questions in their order. Basically with regard to the stormwater management facilities, there will still be, any development of this property will have to conform with the stormwater management ordinances in our code. We're not asking for any exemptions from that. What the nuance that I think people are talking about is that there was the flexibility to provide stormwater management on the property or possibly off the property. They would have to submit that to the Planning Board for review. We would have to review that and approve that condition.
But the standards would still have to be satisfied.
Correct.
In the ordinance, and they're also state standards.
That's right. We would have to conform with those state standards, and that would be specifically controlled.
And some of those issues are, you know, you're really getting into site plan issues, which are for the Planning Board, and bottom line is they're going to have to demonstrate how they satisfy those requirements, which we can't do in an ordinance. They have to do that as part of a plan.
But you feel the verbiage is strong enough?
Oh, yes.
That they are, whether it says obligated or committed, that they?
Absolutely.
Have to do what we set out?
That is correct.
As a plan? Okay, and a lot of it does want up with the Planning Board for them to further review.
That is correct.
Absolutely, and that's going to be the intention.
Just a quick question in regards to issues that might arise. Obviously, I'm on the Planning Board. And what if, hypothetical, they can't meet the standards of, you know, water being discharged we just had mentioned, right? And obviously, the project comes to a halt. The 10 acres that are obviously, you know, purchased in open space money?
10.63.
10.6 acres, is that just locked in? That won't go away?
That is locked in.
In case the plan ever failed, we still have those acreage up there to be preserved?
That's correct.
Okay.
That's correct.
Well, they're not, they're not going to close on the upper piece until they get all of their governmental approvals. So if they don't get under the settlement agreement, if they don't, if they don't, if they, if they don't get their approvals, then they're not going to be obligated to close on the upper 10.63 acres or whatever it is site. However, what we have also built in to the agreement is that they cannot break ground and start construction until that closing occurs. So, you know, you don't get the 10.63 acres until they get all of their governmental approvals. Now, if they can't satisfy the stormwater management regulations, that's going to be a problem to the whole deal, and, you know, I know that the developer has a very high degree of confidence that they are going to be able to satisfy the stormwater management regulations, and Mr. Snikus has had the advantage of having lived with this project in various iterations over the last several years, I think, to also have a high degree of confidence that they should be able to satisfy the stormwater management regulations.
Absolutely.
Again, the reason why there is some room in the ordinance is because, you know, how they meet those regulations is still going to be a function of how they put together the plan, but they have to meet them. If they don't, then the deal falls apart, you don't get the 10.63 acres. If they do, and the project gets approved, you get the 10.63 acres as part of the closing, and they cannot break ground to construct the project until you get those, that acreage.
What is their realistic timeframe for breaking grounds moving forward with this? I mean, what is their realistic timeframe? Because I mean, this all has to come from the Planning Board still.
Correct. They still have to go through the full site plan approval and subdivision process.
Yes.
Because there's a subdivision involved for the 10.63 acres.
So what's the timeframe based on, you know, going in front of the board and?
Let me get, so at this point, under the agreement, going off of memory, I think they have like 120 days or so to submit an application.
Okay.
My guess is, and I'm told, that they are doing the hard engineering now so that they'll be able to submit very soon. Once they submit the application, obviously the municipality has 45 days to deem it complete.
Correct.
And then schedule it for a hearing, and the township has 120 days under law to either approve or not approve the application. I think that what we're envisioning here is that the developer will have this teed up on their side to submit an application, which is likely going to be deemed complete, or if not, be very close to being deemed complete, and they would want to move forward on an expedited basis. The hearing process itself is a function of, you know, how well the applicant is organized. I mean, the fact that the ordinance specifies a lot of detail, I think adds to, makes it much more likely that the hearings will be very efficient, because they're going to have to show, hey, we comply with this, we comply with this, we comply with this, and it's, the ordinance was designed for the applicant to submit a variance-free application. There always could be a minor variance that could arise, but certainly, we do not envision, I think it's highly, highly unlikely, that there will be any significant variances in connection with this application. So then it's just a function of them putting on their case, which they should be able to do very efficiently. Of course, as part of the process, which we can't predict, there could be objectors who can, who obviously have the ability to ask questions of the applicant's professionals, and if the objectors want to put on their own case, they have the ability to do that. So there are a lot of variables that make it difficult to say specifically how much time it should take, but I think that in speaking with the applicant, certainly, I think it's fair to say that they certainly expect, you know, all of the approvals to be obtained in 2016, and, you know, to break ground as soon as they possibly can.
Do you have any environmental concerns where there might be some delays or setbacks?
No, because there's been so much review of this property, and I think especially with the latest reconfiguration of the open space parcel, I believe we're controlling most of those environmental constraints by having that open space parcel.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
I know, yeah.
Okay, I'm Steve Arnold from Fork Craven Road in Mountain Lakes, and, of course, I've been fighting for the buffers in the Duramus Ridge for 34 years, and this is the best I've seen, frankly. So I have a lot of complaints about the Planning Board 34, 32 years ago that didn't follow through on some things, and we here rely on the Planning Board and the site plan to get things right. If they'd gotten things right, this would have been an open space 32 years ago. In the POD ordinance, it said there will be specified certain open space. Didn't get done. Anyway, in this ordinance, first sentence says, as shown on Exhibit B. I got a copy of Exhibit A and B, and if what I got is right, I think Exhibit A is the key one, that I see anyway, that has various things on the left, and Exhibit B says grading plan. So I think it's Exhibit A that you want to refer to, or Exhibits A and B. I think you want to look at that reference to which exhibit are we talking about here? It says in 430 dash 331, simultaneous application. Well, again, the Planning Board and all that needs to make sure these things get taken care of. Simultaneous application for the open space, it's got to take place. In that same paragraph, C. 5, it says, "A permanent grading and drainage easement may be established along the common lot line of the open space lot for the benefit of the retail and commercial sublot." So this is putting an easement on the township's future property of the open space in favor of the developer. This is kind of backwards. Usually, township gets the easements against property owners. This is to protect the developer against drainage or something from the open space? I don't get that clause. That's C. 5, and on the map, I see, I see a lot line, and I see a certain area that's going to have landscape slope. And from what I understand, and maybe I don't understand it right, and I didn't know about the meeting a month ago, so I wasn't here, so. It shows me a landscape slope that's 100 feet wide in the northern edge, that looks to me it's on the open space, and the township is going to be required to have as part of its open space, 100-foot-wide landscaped lot. Why? Why does it have to be 100 feet wide? Why does the township's open space have to have that encumbrance on it? If there's something like that, shouldn't that be on the property owners, on their side?
Time's up, sir. Time is up.
Maybe he could follow up with some of those questions that you have.
I'll try to address them in the reverse order. With regard to the landscape area that you referred to, is that part of the settlement agreement was to allow some grading on the open space tract, and the purpose for that was to minimize the amount of retaining walls that would be necessary in the project. There was a need to grade up into the open space parcel. There is a commitment and a requirement, as I understand it in the settlement agreement, correct me if I'm wrong, that they are to re-landscape that slope. They called for that distance in order to allow for the engineering to occur. At time of site plan, we will be reviewing how much grading needs to occur and trying to minimize that as much as possible. That's a normal action of the Planning Board. They often look at that and treat that very seriously, especially since it's going to be an open space parcel.
And, and, one more. Also, there's a requirement in the agreement that there will be no structures in that area.
Correct, and that leads to the issue of the drainage that you had talked about. There is that slope that runs down towards the commercial parcel that we're talking about this evening. That slope will have runoff that comes down. They're asking for a small section of that to have a swell or a ditch, in essence, to be formed that will be allowing for water to be diverted away from their property that comes off the hillside, and that's what they've asked for. That explains that drainage easement. It's not a structure, it's really just a swell, depression.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You already spoke.
Yeah, I already spoke, but can I ask just a question because of the response that was given?
Can't really, you've already, you've already been up. Is it one quick question?
Yeah, yeah.
Go ahead.
No, it's just that they said that it goes to the Planning Board, and if something doesn't work, you know, they try to make it work. And the settlement agreement, which I thought was all written out here in this ordinance, at any time, anything really can be changed, and an ordinance can be changed to include something that maybe the Planning Board finds not to be right? Am I mistaken with that? That at any time, we can add anything?
The protection that we have built in to this ordinance is that it's also incorporated into the settlement agreement. So the Planning Board is really not able, is not able to approve something at variance with what is in the ordinance, because that would be a violation of the settlement agreement.
Okay, so in this, this ordinance really is the, what's considered the settlement agreement then? Or don't we have that?
No, the settlement agreement is a different document.
It's a separate, different document.
Which has already been voted on and approved.
Okay, but taxpayers never saw a copy of it?
Oh, yes. No, that was done in open public session.
I don't remember, but, okay.
Yep.
All right, thank you.
Okay, see no one else come forward? Entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Motion made by Mr. Valori, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Mr. Valuri.
Yes.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Whereas the above ordinance was read in title on second reading and the hearing held thereon, now therefore be it resolved that said ordinance be passed on final reading and that a notice of final passage of said ordinance be published in the newspaper according to law. Motion to approve the above resolution.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valuri.
Yes.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Formal action may be taken by council this evening on the following. Resolutions are 2015-179. Resolution of the Township Council, the Township of the Township of Parsippany Troy Hills approving the application of BT Property Urban Renewal Company LLC for a long-term tax exemption. Motion to approve.
Motion made by Mr. Paluso, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valuri.
Yes.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Ordinances for introduction. Formal action may be taken by this council this evening on the following.
Ordinance 2015:29. Witness approving financial agreement for long-term tax exemption by between Township Parsippany Troy Hills BT Property Urban Renewal Company LLC. Be resolved above ordinance be introduced read by title, passed on first reading, meet in Township Council. Township Parsippany Troy Hills, held on December 8, 2015. Said ordinance be considered for second reading. Final passage, special meeting be held December 29, 2015. 7:00 PM prevailing time, or sooner afterwards, matter may be reached. Municipal building said township, which time all persons interested shall be given opportunity to be heard concern in said ordinance. Be it further resolved that the clerk be authorized directed advertise said ordinance with the notice of introduction thereof being published in the official newspaper according to law.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Stanton, seconded by Mr. Paluso. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valuri.
Yes.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Okay, ordinances for second readings and public hearings, 2015, 27, and 28. Questions, concerns, issues? Okay, status of adopted ordinances, none. Discussion reminders. Scheduled meetings, December 15, 2015, at 7:30 PM, regular meeting. January 5, 2016, at 7:30 PM, reorganization slash agenda meeting. Minutes for approval, none. Mayor?
How you doing, Paul?
Anything?
Good. Merry Christmas.
Just for the record, should we have noted down there that we have a special meeting coming up?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you indicated that there would be a special meeting.
No, we did, but to get the times. It's not, it's not listed on our agenda here, though. All I'm saying is it should be noted that we have a special meeting.
Okay. Why don't you also take a motion?
Yes.
I'm sorry?
It's actually 4:00 PM, that meeting, right?
Well, so.
On the 29th.
Want it to be at 4:00 PM?
Yeah, yeah, it's gonna be, okay.
Okay. So why don't you, why don't you make a motion for a resolution to have a special meeting of the council on December 29, 2015, at 4:00 PM here in the municipal building. And on the agenda for that meeting will be a public hearing and adoption on ordinance 2015:29. So if somebody makes a motion for that, second.
Okay, do I have a motion for that, for the special meeting on December 29 at 4:00 PM, reference to ordinance 2015:29?
So move.
Motion made by Mr. DePiero, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valuri.
Yes.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes. So, under scheduled meetings, it'll be December 15, 2015, at 7:30 PM for regular meeting. December 29, at 4:00 PM for special meeting. And January 5, 2016, at 7:30 PM for reorganization slash agenda meeting. Okay, administration bids taken?
You skipped over to mayor. To be taken. I did estimate.
Not either.
I did. Can I ask him a question real quick? Sure. Notice your question. Do you know what the status is? Maybe, John, I'll know about this too. What's going on with the project 1515 Route 10 with?
Right now, we're in discussion with them over the amount of units they can put in right now.
Yeah, I think that what's happened is, is that not only that project, but there have been a number of other proposed projects that have come to the municipality, residential projects. And frankly, what's happened is, is that's all thrown into the affordable housing. All those projects have to be, you know, vetted and become part of the affordable housing discussion. And so I think, as you know, on December 15, we are due to receive the report from the municipal consultant, E-Consult, who will opine as to what E-Consult believes Parsippany's affordable housing obligation is. We already have the report from the expert for fair share housing and for the Builders Association as to what they believe it is. Once we get E-Consult's number, and as we continue to receive proposals, such as the Stanbury proposal and many other proposals.
Okay.
We're going to be meeting internally with Ed Snikus, you know, to kind of get a synopsis of what's out there, what we think our obligation may be. And then we'll be meeting back with the governing body to discuss that issue as well. So that, that project is kind of, you know, in the mix with all the other projects that are being proposed at this point in time, residential projects.
Okay.
Because the affordable housing component is an important part. So the question is, you know, what are you doing about density? What are you doing about the percentage of affordable units? And how does that, you know, compare or jive with what Parsippany's overall obligation is going to be? So it's part of that overall planning process.
So what are they going to be obligated in regards to fair housing?
Well, they don't have an obligation. The obligation is on the municipality.
Okay.
And then the municipality has to figure out how it's going to satisfy that obligation. And, you know, the first order of business is to determine which sites in town do you want to look at as prospects for multifamily housing with an affordable component. What percentage of affordable housing are you going to want in those sites?
And we had discussed some of that before.
And we've discussed that certainly conceptually, and those discussions continue to evolve based upon the projects that are coming in, proposals coming in from the developers, and also based upon what our obligation is, which is at the moment, we don't know.
So is that slowing this project down right now, Mayor?
Yes.
For that?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. So are we looking for any particular percentage with this particular project?
We don't know.
We don't know at all?
See, what's happening right now is, you've got anywhere really between 10 and 20% is sort of what, where the numbers are. There are a lot of different variables that go into whether a project is going to be, whether you're going to want 20%, 10%, or 15%.
Okay.
Some of that has to do with, with density. Some of that has to do with the economics of a particular project. So for example, you know, you can, and this is ultimately going to be a policy decision for you, you can, if you want to trade higher density than what maybe your ordinances permit now, in exchange for a greater percentage of affordable housing on a particular site, if you think a site is really well-suited for intense development.
Mm-hmm.
That's a policy decision that you can make. There may be other sites that you feel you really don't want the density, you do want an affordable housing component, and maybe those are less of a percentage. But it has to be viewed, the Stanbury project has to be viewed and with your overall obligation and mix of where you're going to put, you know, residential development that has affordable set-asides. So this project is in that mix.
What do they think, what do they think their obligation is in regards to the affordable housing? What do they think?
I don't think they-
Well, they all start out with, you know, zero.
Zero, okay. All right.
They're developers.
Okay.
And then reality starts to set in, and they'll say 10. And then further reality starts to set in, and, you know, we figure it out.
Okay. And that's the policy that comes from us, then?
Ultimately, it's, ultimately, it's your, it's your decision, and a lot of factors that-
I think it's going to be a great project. I just want to see.
Yeah, if that's, if that's a site, that, and obviously, there are many compelling planning arguments in favor of utilizing that site as a site for higher-end development, that's fine. That's in the mix as a site. But, you know, what's the, what's the density? How much affordability? That's going to depend on other variables that both relate to that site and relate to your overall obligation. And so I think all of that has to be considered kind of together as part of what will become your housing element and fair share plan that you will have to adopt next year. I mean, you have, right now, immunity from builders remedy lawsuits until April 9. We're going to have to submit an affordable housing plan on or before that date. So really, the first quarter of next year is when that particular site, as well as all the other sites, are going to be considered in terms of your housing element and fair share plan. So it's, it's in, it's in process, it's in the mix, but I think it would be, wouldn't be wise to consider that or any other project outside of your affordable housing plan.
Okay.
What happens under the scenario, let's say, the numbers have been bandied around between 400 units and 1,000 units of low-income housing. Let's say we have applications in from developers that would total 1,000 units of low-income housing. And then we find out that our real number, and what is it, March or April, we'll find out the real number?
Well-
Whenever it is, whenever it is.
Yeah.
What happens, we then find out that our real number is going to be 400. How do we deal with the applicants who have put in applications for up to 1,000?
Well-
The first come, first served?
No. What you have to do, well, it is in the sense that they're going to have to come before your affordable housing plan is adopted, because once it's adopted, it's adopted. So if developers want to come in after that occurs, then, then, you know, they're going to be late to the party. So what's going to happen is, is that the judge is going to make a preliminary determination of need probably sometime in February, working with the special master. And we're going to be setting up meetings, by the way. We're going to be very heavy meeting schedule with, with all the developers who have submitted concept plans and have expressed an interest to be included in your housing element and fair share plan. We're already getting requests for those meetings. The court has already ordered that we have those meetings. So the month of January and February, we're going to have a ton of meetings with these developers, which will give Ed Snikus an opportunity, together with us, to vet the suitability of each site for what is a good site, A, and B, what is, what are the appropriate densities. Again, we're going to have a preliminary determination from the judge. We envision sometime in February, so we think we're going to get a pretty strong indication from the judge in February as to what our number should be. And then that gives us an extra 60 days or so to fine-tune our housing plan based upon what the judge has told us that he believes the determination should be. In a perfect world, we will have, you know, development proposal that will match what our preliminary determination is, or a little less. If it's more, you know, we'll, we'll have to see how that process plays out. That's one of the reasons why the judge has appointed a special master to assist him and to assist the municipalities in expediting, you know, the process. So I don't have any specific answers right now. Nobody does. But what I can do, and attempted to do just now, was sort of lay out what the process is, what the considerations are, and go forward on that basis.
But one thing we know for sure, the 26 acres that Waterview is out of, out of the low-income housing business.
Well, that is certainly our position. There may be others that say something different at some point in time, but certainly, as it relates to RD Realty, you know, that lawsuit is, is off the table. And as soon as they get the approvals, the stipulations of dismissal with prejudice will be filed with the court. And as it relates to RD Realty and the township of Parsippany Troy Hills, there will be no claim for affordable housing on that side.
And I want to add, Councilman Valori, one of the stipulations when I agreed to approve the pilot program for 1515 Route 10, was that they would give us a housing obligation of one for five. And that's something that on the record, I had stated that that's what I was looking for. So for every five units, one is a low-income housing unit.
Okay. Yeah, great, thank you. Okay, administration bids taken, to be taken. Any questions, concerns, quotations, proposals, qualifications, none. Ordinances, none. Resolutions? Any questions?
Question on resolution for the Township Council awarding contract for health benefits for IDA. I have some questions on that, which I need to speak to the administration about.
Okay.
Question?
Do you want to-
I believe they're here.
Ask them now? We have a representative from IDA here.
Who could speak.
Or you want to, you know?
I have to gather my thoughts, because that was not on the original email to us with resolutions. That's just been added.
Correct.
But one of them, off the top of my head, was the audit exception that we had in reference to IDA and freeing us from liability.
Yes, we, we actually did receive the SOC report just this week, actually, last week, Friday. So-
Because that was a major audit exception.
That's huge, yeah.
The SOC report that we had on IDA.
We did receive it, and I can forward it all to you.
Please do.
Yep.
Okay, Township Office reports, engineer report, Mr. Stanton.
Okay, Panera LLC Performance Guarantee Release, Block 729, Lot 7. Developer completed all site work in accordance with the approved plans. Inspections were made during the course of construction. This office has no objection to the release of the performance bond. Resolution needs to be adopted by the Township Council.
Need a motion for that? Just a second.
Yeah, we need to add that.
You need to add it?
Yep.
You can add it, it's in the list.
Yeah.
Add that on, Nora.
Okay, everything else is no council action required.
Okay, Chief Financial Officer? Resolutions, any questions?
I have a bunch of resolutions that'll be coming. I realized I didn't get them all to you, because I don't have the final exact numbers for each one of these. So these are housekeeping items, like some uncollected credit balances we're going to write off at the end of the year.
No questions.
And I don't have the budget transfers completely, but I will get them to you before the next meeting.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Valori?
There is one resolution for action that we spoke about.
Right. Yeah, just a quick question. One of our department heads is out of country right now, supposedly in London. I'd just like to know, because I had some concerns about that. I had gotten several calls about that. And I'd just like to know, who's paying for that trip?
I'm not sure. I'll have to get back to you on that.
Okay. And I just, I just-
It's, my understanding is vacation-related. I'm not really sure. We were also asking that question. I believe Ellen asked that question.
So the question is, is, actually, it's a couple, briefful, is that, and I don't want to put Ellen on the spot, because she's not here, and I know she obviously really scrutinizes everything. So number one is, when did this person put in for that request? Okay, so there should be a, a request for vacation to obviously, you know, he could do whatever he wants on vacation.
I don't want to get into a price note, it's an issue.
Okay. Well, I'm not mentioning the name.
I know, but-
Okay.
Be more generalized.
Okay, more generalized. Who's paying for it?
Okay.
Okay?
Mm-hmm.
For how long? And if I hear the answer that this is contract-related, then we all need to sit down, because it's unacceptable. And also, that department head does not have a contract. And I want to know what the status is with that contract, because obviously, we were negotiating, and we never heard any responses back on that. So I need to get answers on that also.
Okay.
Okay?
Yep.
Thanks.
We'll get back to you on that. I'll assure you that Ellen has reached out for those answers.
Thank you. Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, formal action to be taken by council this evening on the following. Mr. Valori?
Yes, Resolution 2015-180. Resolution pursuant to New Jersey ASA 40A:4-55, providing for a special emergency appropriation to the Township of Persippany Troy Hills in the County of Morris, New Jersey. The Township are providing for the financing thereof by the issuance of special emergency notes of the township.
Motion made by Mr. Valori, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. DePiero.
Yes.
Mr. Valuri.
Yes.
Yes.
Sorry.
That's okay.
Mr. Paluso. Mr. Paluso.
Yes.
Mr. Stanton.
Yes.
Mr. Valuri.
Yes.
Mr. Krefi.
Yes.
Attorney? Yes.
Mr. Creefe.
Yes. Attorney?
I have nothing further.
Township offices, committees, communications, applications, licensing renewals?
Sorry, too fast. Township offices and committees, I got a report from the historical committee. A couple of things I want to relay to council is they're working on curriculum with the school system for educating the students on the history of Precipity. They have three projects they're working on. Also, they had some questions about the Waterview Cemetery being preserved, and if we were acquiring the cemetery parcel included in the 10.6 acres. And I did ask our township attorney to review it, and prior to this meeting, yes, it's not included in the 10.6 acres, and it's separate, and the township is not acquiring the cemetery property.
That is correct.
Thank you. The third is the Smith-Bowen House. They want to be part of the planning process on the Smith-Bowen House, and that's something that I had emailed our business administrator to ask her to work with the director of the historical committee about that matter. Thank you.
Okay, applications, licensing renewals, 2016, new limousine company. Any questions, concerns on those? All right, at this time, I entertain a motion to open up the public hearing. Motion made by Mr. Stanton.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Paluso, roll call.
Mr. DiPiero?
Yes.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Creefe.
Yes. Please, if you come up, state your name, address, sign in. You'll be given five minutes.
First of all, good evening. I'd like to let you, council members, know, and in the administration, on September 22nd, 2015, you voted and approved my reimbursement for legal fees regarding Resolution 2013-209. It's the same resolution that Mr. Stanton and Mr. Barberio was able to recover their legal fees for the false criminal allegations that were made against me. You guys voted on it, and you approved it. I want to let you know, as of today, I have yet to receive any communication from your administration regarding that specific vote that you made. I would like the record to reflect that if somebody has instructed the administration to either disregard or ignore your vote, that that be placed on the record as of tonight. And you could, you could address these issues with Ms. Cucci, because obviously, Ms. Sam is not here, but perhaps, since she's the chief financial officer, she would know. Also, Mr. DiPiero, you voted no, and you said that it was premature. Well, I'm here to stand before you today and tell you that's no longer premature. This is the five-page decision of your hearing officer. Now, it's important to know what you mean by "your hearing officer," because it's not mine. This is somebody that was appointed by the mayor and subsequently approved by you to hear contractually disciplinary matters regarding the Precipity Police Department. In his five-page decision, he states that Precipity lacks jurisdiction to proceed administratively against me. Okay? I have the five-page decision, if you're, to give to each one of you. Please don't take my word, I'm going to surmise it, because I only have a few more minutes. So I want to talk specifically about certain things that he had mentioned. Let me tell you that the town was well represented by two attorneys, which we've never seen before, in administrative matters. I mean, Mr. Stanton and Mr. Valori, you're both police officers, I don't know if you've ever seen that happen, but I have not. But nevertheless, you were well represented. And thousands of pages of material have been submitted to your hearing officer in reference to the pre-hearing motion that addressed this that I hold in front of you right now. And he opens up and says, "In response to the motion dismissed, it is my opinion and finding that the Township of Precipity lacks jurisdiction in this matter. Jurisdiction is in fact time-barred by any measure of reasonableness. No matter how legitimate the concerns/facts of this case may or may not be, Captain Creefe is no longer within the administrative reach of Precipity Township. Further, it is my opinion that he has not been within said reach for quite some time. I arrive at this conclusion subsequent to the thorough review of the volumes of material provided." Now, Precipity's argument was, they based their case on State versus Beatty, and that, they wanted the record to reflect that although I retired, that my record could be changed, and it could affect my permanent record. And he even addressed that as well. He specifically says, "I contend that it should not be included in Creefe's file." He further goes on and says, "Numerous documents related to the Creefe matter established that James Creefe retired on April 1st, 2013, and was subsequently served with a performance notice of disciplinary on December 24th." And again, December 24th, Christmas Eve, Christmas Eve. Thus, a period of one year, eight months, and 24 days transpired between retirement and the service on Christmas Eve. The chief, the hearing officer, Chief Devine, further says, "Service of the performance notice of disciplinary charges on Christmas Eve does little to enhance the credible intent of this process. An additional distinction between the Beatty and the Creefe matters is the record of formal declarations that James Creefe retired in, quote, 'good standing.' Further, at least one of these was made by the chief of police while under oath." He further states, "Precipity did its best to ensure integrity with the police department. However, there must be a balance within all investigative and disciplinary initiatives. The Morris and Somerset County Prosecutors' Office have investigated this matter, the Police Training Commission reviewed and responded to a limited scope of this matter, and the Pension Board has done likewise. It would seem that this process has been exhausted." Regarding disciplining me, he states, "I fail to understand how the fundamental purpose of discipline applies to James Creefe at this time." He further states, "It is the totality of these aforementioned reasons that lead to the inevitable conclusion, opinion, and recommendation..."
Thirty seconds.
"...that Precipity no longer has jurisdiction in this matter." I have 30 seconds, you can read the conclusion. He says, "I therefore close and recommend that Precipity strongly consider concluding this matter at this time. I ask for two separate distinct motions. I ask that you reimburse my legal fees and that you accept this hearing officer's recommendation. And my second one is that you release the payment that you owe me for the three years that I've been retired in good standing by your chief of police, and I ask that interest be awarded as well." Two distinct motions. Thank you. Anybody want a copy?
Yes.
Yeah, I'd take a copy. If you can, do you have enough copy where you can give it to the clerk?
I have, I have enough copies for each one of you.
Okay.
With the exception of you.
Yeah, I can take it. Sure.
Yes, you may approach the clerk, please.
I think I give you one. Ann, I wish Ellen was here.
Hello?
In regards to, I was looking back at my notes here. In regards to the first resolution that I had put forward for Mr. Creefe to be reimbursed for obviously, the criminal, obviously, the criminal allegations that were made against him, and obviously, they were not, obviously substantiated for being reimbursed on that. We had discussed it, I know a motion went forward, there was some dialogue on it, it was approved. What happened with that?
I don't have any resolution, I was not, John, I don't have anything.
I don't have any news about it.
I don't have any resolution myself.
But you were here that night during the meeting?
It was very confusing, quite frankly, and when I get a directive exactly what the resolution is, and, and I'm directed to pay, then of course, I will do what the administration tells me to do. I don't have a resolution.
Okay, can you do me a favor? Can you go back in the minutes for that night? Because I didn't realize that wasn't approved, I thought it was in the process of being approved for the payment for the criminal, obviously, you know, legal fees that he had to obviously pay for.
I will go back.
And I know there was a resolution, because I know we...
I didn't see any formal resolution.
Okay. Maybe there wasn't a formal, but a motion was forward, made forward, it was agreed upon, it was passed, for a resolution to reimbursement, like it's been done in the past.
Right.
So I'm just concerned about that.
I understand. I don't have anything in writing.
The only thing is, you know, obviously, Mr. Creefe came up and addressed this case here. What I'm concerned about is this, on top of the issues that he was just addressing here, we're, we're passing a resolution tonight in regards to payout of over $1 million that you have to obviously get emergency money for. And these are all individuals that had worked for the town, and they're getting reimbursed. Now, you know, the matter that he's addressing right now, you know, states that, you know, there's issues with, you know, the chief obviously making his decision, Chief Devine saying that, you know, obviously, township shouldn't go any further with this. And, you know, you have the chief of police mentioning that, or stating on record that he retired in good standing. So what are we doing? Is he going to get reimbursed his sick time vacation and comp time, or, or what?
You can't answer that question.
I can't answer that question.
I don't have it right now.
Okay, so here's, here's what I'll do. And again, obviously, looking back at my notes, nothing went forward when I made that motion to obviously approve for the criminal reimbursement, because obviously, those allegations, obviously, did not go forward against him. I'd just like to make a motion for him to be reimbursed, just like all these other officers that were approving to be reimbursed for his sick time, vacation, and comp time. Because if he's entitled to it, and he retired in good standing, I don't know why we're not reimbursing him. And I know that Mr. DiPiero, during that night, Mr. DiPiero, I know you're sick, you had made mention that if administratively, it was decided upon, and he's reading this information from Chief Devine, who I know very well, who is obviously a holo-guarded chief of police, and he's hired by our town. So if the man's not being charged criminally, he should have been reimbursed for that over a month ago. It's on the record. Number two...
Well, we have, we have an attorney that's representing the township in this case.
Okay.
And I haven't heard from our attorney, and that's, this is one perspective, I had not heard from Dennis Driscoll. Mr. Inglisino can't respond to this...
I know.
...allegation, okay? So I, I need to hear from our own attorney, Dennis Driscoll, before I'd be willing to vote on this.
Okay, so going backwards, a month ago, obviously, Mr. Creefe came in here with his attorney on one, one of the council meetings, came in here with his attorney, went into great detail, and unfortunately, Ellen wasn't around, or you at the time.
Right.
So we really couldn't ask any questions. A week went by, we figured that we would have had some type of response, because everything's on record here. And obviously, I brought it up to find out what the status is with that motion that I put forward, and it was seconded by Mr. Paluso in regards to being reimbursed, like reimbursements have done in the past, when somebody's obviously accused of criminal wrongdoing, and he was cleared of all those allegations, he should be reimbursed, as much as you like him or don't like him. So a month has gone by, and nothing's come forward. So did anybody tell you not to make payment, or?
No, I was not directed to make payment. Okay. As far as it's not in the budget this particular year, as you could see, the ordinance did not pass. I mean, with any of his...
So this is just for criminal? This is, that was just for criminal?
I would request that we get a report from Dennis Driscoll...
Yeah, I'm thinking we should do that.
Okay, well, well, Dennis, well, hold on, timeout, and I have nothing against Dennis whatsoever. A month ago, it was approved, the motion in regards to be reimbursed for criminal allegations that were made against him, and he was cleared. He was exonerated. So my point is, a month went by, actually, there was a weak buffer, and then we went back to it, and we got into a heated argument. But my point of the matter is, what is the administration doing? A month went by, and this was for criminal allegations, and the man was cleared on. So he should have been reimbursed on that. So, you know, it's not like, you know, I'm trying to ask you vague and ambiguous questions about a department head being out in London, okay?
I understand.
Which I want an answer on. This, a month ago, this should have been paid out. So now I'm looking at approving all these other officers, and I'm a retired internal affairs officer, right? Where you have over $1 million going out in payments, and if the man is entitled to be reimbursed for his sick time, vacation, and obviously, comp, like these guys are and ladies, then he should be entitled, especially if you have Chief Devine stating on record, which now we're getting a copy of it, that, where are we going with this?
Well, you have two different issues.
Yes.
You brought them up in one sentence here, like two different issues. One is the payout, okay? That needs to be approved in the budget.
Well, I would, I would suggest that we go back to this...
Yeah, well, you know, this can all be done the first of the year for the 16 budget, if everybody agrees. You know, we pay out right away in the first of the year. But of course, we need to approve all that and go through the motion. I think, on the other subject, I think, well, I guess we should talk to our attorney.
Here's what we're going to do, I mean, we have to do, we're going to talk to Dennis Driscoll, who, who was handling the case as we speak. There's going to be a response back to Chief Devine from the township. So whatever he brought forward to you today...
No, that's, he brought forward to all of us.
Yeah, to all of you today, is going to be responded to, and Chief Devine's waiting for a response.
Okay.
In that matter. Also, as you know, there's Creefe one that's still going on, and Creefe two.
Which I have nothing to do with.
Right, well, in essence, I don't know if you do or don't, other than that, you know, you did get a letter of being conflicted, so...
And, and I explained to the guy to the right of me, and the attorney...
But that's why that vote wouldn't count if you are conflicted, that's...
Okay, but you notice, that's an opinion, though.
No, 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 I'm just going to, I'm just going to answer the question.
It's Christmas season, so I don't want to be...
Exactly, Merry Christmas, by the way, in that fact. But we are going to be responding to Chief Devine, and that, that...
And I'm just going to say one thing to you, because I know this is not your expertise, and John's certainly not either. Listen, I did internal affairs for five years, and you have the township hiring a chief of police, and we're paying him good money, too, okay? Which aggravates me, right?
I see that.
But we're paying him good money, and he's making a decision saying, "You're not going forward with this, there's case law in it." And I've sat in administrative hearings with Mr. Knapp, who's our prosecutor, because he was the, obviously, attorney representing, actually, him alone with Mr. Trembley back in the day, in regards to administrative hearings, I sat in them. So my point is, you know, this is us getting old, you know what I mean? I'm tired of being up here discussing this.
Well, I do agree with you, it's getting old, but...
So my point of the matter is, on everyone's end, listen, the reality is, however those other lawsuits go, they go. But if someone's entitled to be reimbursed for a criminal when they were not found criminally, obviously viable...
Here's how I'll end it, Councilman, because I think really, we're probably going above what we should. There've been depositions taken, and in those depositions, there were answers that were given, and we're going to carefully look at them, we're going to send a letter to Chief Devine, because he requested again the response, we're going to give him a response.
Okay.
And when that response is given out, you will also have that response.
Okay.
Okay?
So here's what I'd like to do, is Ellen, hopefully, not Ellen, Ann?
Ann.
I miss Ellen. Hopefully, you or Ellen will get back to me on the first motion that I made in regards to criminals being reimbursed, and I'll, I'll put it on record again, and again, we'll wait for an answer back from the administration. I'd still like to make a motion to move forward to be reimbursed on his expenses concerning his administrative, and obviously, for his reimbursement on his, you know, sick time vacation and comp. So again, if the administration wants to hold it up, that's on you, but I'm taking action as a councilman to say, hey, listen, let's just obviously stop spending exuberant amount of money on the legal fees on both ends here, because it's getting to a point where you have the chief of police, who's representing the town, saying, "This case, administratively, is not going anywhere." And I got other issues about one of our department heads with his testimony, which we might have to take up at another time. But I want to make a motion going forward for him to be reimbursed on his fees, and that would be his administrative and obviously, his sick time vacation comp, just like all these other officers are getting. So do I have a second?
Yeah, Councilman Valori, you know, I had asked our township attorney to have our attorney, Driscoll, contact me several times, and we have somebody from the audience, a resident, also asking me, as of even the last meeting, if he's reached out to me or I've contacted him. I've also left him a message today. You know, making a motion for something and having a second has nothing to do with Mr. Driscoll, with all due respect. You know, there was a motion, a second, and a resolution needs to be drawn up. So the resolution I would direct to be drawn up right now, that we originally had asked for the fees to reimburse since he was cleared. Second of all...
And that would have been on the criminal?
It would have been on the criminal, yes, that's correct, as we had motion. That's correct, as we had motion. You know, looking at the expenses of, of anybody that's been exonerated, or falsely accused, from my recollection is, we have reimbursed people, such as the mayor, such as Mr. Stan, for their fees. So, if that's the case, and it's confirmed by Mr. Driscoll that, um, what Mr. Corrifi had mentioned a few moments ago in public session is true and accurate, then I don't have a problem with giving you a second on that. Um, I will give you a second, based upon the fact that it's verified with Mr. Driscoll, that it's true and accurate, on what Mr. Corrifi is indicating at the mic. So, I do not have that in front of me. I know he was reading from the court document, but, you know, I, I want that confirmed first. You know, so for me, the, the findings have to be, you know, accurate, and they have to be true. If, if they are, then I don't have a problem with that second. So, I'm formally giving you a second on your motion, based upon the fact that, the caveat that we do verify with Mr. Driscoll, that everything that he had mentioned is true and accurate. As far as the, um, the legal fees are concerned, is, again, if, if he's exonerated, and we have reimbursed for other people in the past, we can't be discriminatory in reimbursing for one, not for another. There's been a precedence that's been set in our community. So, I would not have a problem with making a motion for those fees to be reimbursed for legal.
And you're saying that based upon-
Based upon a precedence-
The lawyer, Driscoll.
Based upon-
Okay.
Our attorney, Mr. Driscoll, you know, confirming that it's true and accurate, and based upon the fact that it's been a precedence that if somebody's been exonerated-
What's that?
That we reimburse the fees. You know, one of the things that I, I find very appalling in this, Councilman Valori, is the fact that we have a hearing officer that we do pay for. And I remember questioning why we're hiring a hearing officer, and it was recommended by the mayor. So, I questioned it, and because it was recommended by our mayor, I approved it. So, I approved that hearing officer, so if it's true and accurate that the hearing officer is making a recommendation, I would expect our township to adhere to what the hearing officer is recommending. We need to put a rest to this case, and it seems to be that the hearing officer is asking for this to be done. So, you know, I, I would like to get that copy, that, uh, which is given to the clerk, I wanna further review that as well. And I wanna speak to, uh, Mr. Driscoll, and I did leave him a message today, and, you know, I'll expect his phone call tomorrow, and since he does work for-
I will get, I'll have, uh, Mr. Driscoll contact you, but just to make one thing clear, Chief Devine has nothing to do with either case, Corrifi wanted to.
Then why is he making a determination on the case?
That's what I'm saying, you're saying that he's not involved in the cases, am I correct? I mean, I can't tell you that, but you know, you're asking-
Just real quick-
The case, the hearing, the hearing is different.
The administrative case, he is involved in the-
You say cases, that's why, and I wanna correct on cases.
Just real quick, Q, instead of just having Mr. Driscoll call, can we have him at the next meeting?
I would prefer-
I'd rather have him at the meeting, cause if he's calling him, I also have questions.
Yes.
Cause if you notice, I've abstained from day one, cause my name was, including, I've been subpoenaed. So, I'd rather have him here.
Yeah, a public meeting, I remember that.
And Councilman Peluso, just to follow up here, now, again, I made a motion a month ago, it was approved, we didn't hear anything back, but I-
Well, I, I just indicated that we need to get a resolution now, because it's already approved, that has nothing to do with Mr. Driscoll.
So, my point is, what I'm asking for now, secondly, is, the reality is, I don't think this gentleman would come up and present us with, obviously, documentation from Chief Devine that is not, obviously, valid and correct. And you're right, Mr. Driscoll needs to give you a call, and you need to speak to him.
Yeah, but I'm not, Mr., Councilman Valori, I'm not questioning the integrity of anybody that comes up here.
No, so-
What I'm questioning is, is that I need some legal advice-
Yes.
That what, what a resident is indicating, or a former employee is indicating, is true and accurate.
Yes.
I will not vote on anything that is not true and accurate. I will give you a second, based upon it is true and accurate.
The information that was provided, and that's what I'm trying to say.
Yes, and I highly recommend that, you know, Councilman Stan is correct, that we have, uh, Mr. Driscoll here to talk with us. You know, I've already asked the Jif attorney to meet with me, but they refused. I actually refused, they refused to provide me information, how to contact the Jif attorney. I actually had to get the Jif attorney's phone number, and after speaking with them, they told me, speak to the administration. So, you know, I, I run around in circles with attorneys, you know, so I'm, I'm tired of this. You know, if, if somebody's been exonerated, make them whole. So, I agree with your second, and I agree with Councilman Stan.
And at the same time, I'm actually gonna ask you to table your motion, because I can't go forward until Mr. Driscoll comes up here.
But you can't vote on your-
When he gets up, I might not be.
Well, and-
If they oppose, I'm not.
Mr. DePiero, I'm gonna stick by, obviously, what I had stated initially, I know I'm confusing you more, and we have a second on the floor, so, obviously, Paul, do a roll call. You second my motion?
Paul cannot do a roll call.
Okay.
He'll do it, he'll, he'll do it.
I'll have to do it as vice president.
Okay, if, if we can do a roll call.
And then, Ann, I have another question for you after I'm done with this.
Go ahead.
Mr. DiPiero.
I've got nothing to vote on, I already said I'm waiting for Mr. Driscoll's report.
So, do you abstain, or no vote?
Well, I, your, your motion confuses me, Mr. Peluso. How can you say you waited for Mr. Driscoll's report, but you second the motion? Either you're waiting for the report, or you're not waiting for the report.
I, I said, I, I agree with the motion, I agree with the motion, based upon an additional-
So, then you seconded the motion period, you don't care about what Driscoll says?
I'm, I'm second the motion, based upon what Mr. Driscoll confirms is true and accurate.
And how could you vote?
Then you can't vote.
Then you can't vote. Cause you could vote, and then he could come here and say something's not accurate, we-
Listen, I'm, I put my motion-
Well, then it would rescind the resolution then, at that point.
Okay. Listen, there were facts-
And I'd be happy to withdraw the resolution if it's not true and accurate then.
And I'll be quite frank, there's nothing complicated here, the reality is this, number one, a month ago, there was, the gentleman's attorney that came here, went into great detail of why-
We went, we've heard all, we've heard all of this.
No, 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 I'm not talking, I know you're not feeling good, but sit down and relax for a second.
We've heard all of this, okay?
No, because you just-
What is so objectionable to listen to your own township attorney's report, before you make that motion?
Listen, Mr. DePiero, you know, you're right about that, okay? I have a lot of questions, and I don't wanna pick on John tonight, just before Christmas is on the way here.
Well, John can, John can-
But, but it's fine, because a month ago, him and I were going at it, in regards to that motion that I put forward, okay? And after we get done with this motion being approved, I'm gonna talk about a million dollars in expenses, in regards to Aurora, because I need to find out exactly how we're still paying Aurora, and how Aurora was not licensed for the last year and a half, while we hired them, paying them a million dollars, and then on top of that, there's an article in the paper that this guy just got federally charged to pay like $400,000, so I'm very, but I'm very concerned.
All right, let's, uh, let's-
I'm very concerned.
Is that all tied to your, is that all tied to your motion?
No, but that's gonna be afterward.
This is, this has nothing to do with the motion that you're making right now. So, we're in the middle of roll call, Nora, please continue roll call. You had, you had asked, uh, Councilman DePiero, and his response was?
No.
Okay.
Very good.
Mr. Peluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Until I hear from Mr. Driscoll, who could answer my questions, I don't know if I have to recuse myself or not, so I'm gonna abstain.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Corrifi?
Abstain.
Thank you.
So, getting back to Ellen. Ellen, I'm just concerned in regards to now, oh, Ann, I'm sorry, Ann, where are we at in regards to still making payments to Aurora? Are we still paying this company?
We are not paying Aurora directly.
Okay, so-
I can't say it.
Let me ask you a question. Go ahead, you ask me, go ahead.
I just, I just like to know, how much have we been paying them over the last year?
I will get back to you on that.
Okay, so obviously, they've been getting paid, you're the CFO.
Well, no, I am not paying Aurora directly.
Okay, so, have you been paying somebody to pay Aurora?
Yes.
Okay, so, what's that come out to about a month? That we're making payments to Aurora?
I believe it was from last year, um, and it was already, uh, encumbered in last year's budget, I believe it's what, $6,000 or $5,000 a month?
A month.
It's from last year.
Okay.
And, and you know, I would-
So, so the question I have for you is this, when you're cutting checks for the go-between, right, do you have an idea of what we're paying 6,000, cause, I'm just giving you an idea here, I spoke to folks that are in the tech field, someone whose computer that falls in, obviously, the ocean, right, they recovered a week later, it's about maybe $40,000, $50,000 to restore and get all the data off that computer, everything that's on there. So, I don't know how we get a bill that we negotiated, thank God to Ellen, that would've been almost a million dollars. And I see this guy's face in the paper, and I really, truly, if you could ask Ann, I mean, Ann, if you could ask Ellen, if you could have this gentleman from Aurora show up here, cause if not, then we need to get our attorney, and we're going to subpoena him to be here then, and we'll have him on their oath. Because I'd like to know how we're paying somebody a million dollars for a computer. And what aggravates me, you have a chief of police that's making a decision based on this case. So, I wanna know what he did for a million dollars, and then $6,000 a month for last year.
We didn't pay him a million dollars.
Okay, but we were billed a million dollars.
You negotiated them.
You negotiated.
We weren't, right, and we weren't billed a million dollars.
Okay, so how much were we billed?
We were not directly billed, and what we paid, we negotiated last year, $250,000.
Okay, Ellen, Ann, let's stop playing, listen, how much were we billed? About $800,000?
I did not see a bill for $800,000.
Okay, here's what I'm gonna do-
However, let me, excuse me.
For next council meeting, I'll bring that information, so I'll, I'll refresh your memory.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I, we're going around in circles here about something that was settled last year.
No, so that's, that's my point, what was settled, because you're telling me that $6,000 a month is going out for last year?
Yeah, because we, we encumbered that money back last year, and made an agreement not to pay it all out last year. We agreed that we would pay it slowly this year, once a month, $5,900, I believe it was, $70,000 total, to finish it off last year. We're not paying anything additional, unless you agree to it in advance.
So, there hasn't been any other bills that have been given to us, that's additional to the $6,000 payment a month?
No, there is, I believe, $22,000.
What's $22,000 for?
But I am not, you know-
Is that to pay his legal expense that he's getting sued for?
No, obviously, I don't know, I'm not at liberty to say. I-
Oh, it's another computer less.
What? Let me ask you a question. I, you know, for this subject, I don't think it's fair that you come at the CFO.
Well, unfortunately, Ellen's not here.
Now, let me finish it, yes, I realize that, and I think it would be best if we do this with Ellen, together next week. I mean, because I can only be the CFO and approve things that have been approved already by administration. I am not the approver of the expenses. I am approve, I approve if the expenses are encumbered and available through budget, okay? If the money is available, that's what I agree to.
Here's what we'll do, Councilman Valori, when, when Ellen comes back, she'll give you all, I know she said she spoke to you in the past, with regards to the fees and stuff that have been charged, I'll make sure-
Well, some of the fees.
Yeah, I'll make sure she contacts you, but, you know-
I don't wanna ruin your Christmas here.
Contact everyone.
You're not gonna ruin my Christmas, believe me when I tell you, but, um, you know, and she'll tell you what the, the $22,000 was for, as well. It's, uh, it's, it's pretty in-depth and detailed, and, um, you know-
All right, so she'll get back to me?
Yep.
Okay, all right.
Jonathan Nelson, 202 Patriots wrote, uh, Councilman Valori, in all due respect, you are asking the wrong question.
Okay, that's right.
Aurora never billed Parsippany.
Right.
I, I think that's what Ann was trying to say, in a roundabout way. Aurora has always billed Mr. Inglesino's firm, and Mr. Inglesino's firm would pass the bill to Parsippany, so Parsippany would reimburse Mr. Inglesino's firm, who would then, would then in turn pay Aurora.
Okay.
Aurora billed, I have all Aurora's bills, um, from the day that they were hired, in February 2013, they, they billed Mr. Inglesino's firm, not the town, about $800, $900,000. Last year at the council meeting, uh, Ellen, Mayor Barbario, stated that they negotiated the amount that Aurora stated, and the amount that they had billed John's firm, they negotiated it down to $220,000, 220, 225,000, something like that. And we made a down, the town made a down payment of, I think, $150,000, and we were, the town was required to pay John's firm to reimburse Aurora, uh, it was about $5,800 a month. So, if we do our math, either this month or next month will be the final payment on that negotiated it down, 220, and that covered all the bills that they ever billed in the past. Is that, that's about right, John, right? All right, you don't, yeah.
I'll say that's correct.
Okay. Now, that was up until November or December 2014.
December.
And, and Ellen stated, you know, we had a clean slate, once we paid that 220, we were done. But the problem was, 2015 came along, and Aurora is still doing work, and they're still billing Mr. Inglesino's firm, and Mr. Inglesino's firm is, needs to recoup the money, and they billed the Parsippany for the work that Aurora's done. And up until this time, I think, it was about $20,000, $25,000 in addition to the 220 that we were paying, and then as an additional $22,000 bill, I guess that was separated out for additional work that they did. I got, I saw the contract, but it was all redacted, so I, I couldn't possibly tell you what that was about, but that's where that $22,000 came from. Um, yeah, I've never spoken about the Corrifi case here, but, um, it wasn't reported in the newspapers, and very few people know about it, but there was a hearing down in Morristown last month, spent two days sitting in the audience watching it, and, um, it was regarding Corrifi one, I believe, and there were four witnesses over the two days. You had Chief Phillips, you had Matthew Ferente, who was, uh, the owner or the founder of Aurora, you had Captain Andy Miller, and you had another, uh, computer forensic expert, I don't recall his name. I sat through the entire hearing, and one thing that you should all be very proud of, uh, we weren't allowed to sit through, uh, all of Chief Phillips' testimony, cause we were asked to leave the room because of, uh, certain internal affairs, uh, questions that the public wasn't privy to hear, but I did sit through all of Captain Miller's testimony, and I don't know Captain Miller, other than just, you know, not hello, but I think the town should be very proud of this guy, because I have never seen a police officer so well-composed, under very, very difficult questions. And he enlightened the judge, he enlightened the audience members, about how internal affairs investigations go, and I think it needs to get out there, that, and, you know, just like, uh, Mr. Corrifi said before, and you said, don't take my word for it, you know, get the audio transcripts. But Captain Miller testified that an internal affairs investigation was going on, and he had read the report, and sometime between June and, and September of this year, possibly exculpatory files regarding the internal affairs investigation regarding Jim Corrifi, was pulled out and removed, and his entire 20-plus-year career of working in the police department, and a big part of that time working in internal affairs, he's never seen any kind of documentation or files pulled out of an internal affairs, uh, file. I don't know how Internal Affairs go, but I strongly suggest to the council and administration, and I'm sure Mr. Inglesino's firm already has it, to get the audio transcripts of those court proceedings. And I think once the council, administration, and everybody listens to Captain Miller's testimony...
30 seconds.
I think the town may be in its best interest to just wrap these cases up, because it's been going on for pushing three years, and this is not good for anybody. It's not good for Mr. Karifi, and certainly not good for the town. And then I have about 20 seconds, and my last question is, changing the subject, I see there's a resolution for canceling sewer balances. Does this have anything to do with towns who still owe Parsippany money?
No, it's $1.70.
Okay.
To be honest with you.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Nelson, what date was that hearing and the transcripts?
I have to look in my calendar.
If you can get back to me, I appreciate that.
It was last month.
I'm gonna pull up what I'm hearing, thank you.
Roy Masmer, 10 Drummond Drive. I'll tell you something, three years I've stood up here, I think, once or twice to talk about this case, and after I hear tonight that this man's family, he didn't even murder anybody, he was served papers on Christmas Eve, I mean, come on. This thing is so absurd, so ridiculous, so sad. His family's paying the bills, we're paying the township bills. Now, I'm only gonna get five minutes, but I can tell you a lot about this, and I never stood up here and went public with any of this, because I'm not that type of person, but I'm the one that caught close to $5,000 in sales tax. These bills, it's ridiculous I gotta talk like this, but these bills were not submitted to the town from John Inglesino's office till after the primary, but yet this guy, Matthew Ferente, Matt Ferente, did all the work from February to the end of May, who works, I don't care if you're an outside contractor or employee, works five or six months and doesn't get paid. Then they were submitted, so they couldn't be on public record. John, your office did a horrible job, or you did a horrible job, and you're not sales tax and everything else, I mean, because to me, when I find something small, then something big might be missing. But again, I sit here tonight and hear for the first time that that family was served papers on Christmas Eve. You know, Jonathan did an excellent job, and he was, I didn't know he was at that court case a couple of weeks ago, whatever, but there was, when Captain Karifi got up here, he spoke about a couple of things. I'd never heard of who Chief Devine was, exactly what his position, what he's doing, is he like an arbitrator?
Appointed by the town.
Appointed by the town?
The town.
Oh, not a...
And we approved his fees.
Okay, but Captain Karifi brought up two things, two motions, which, first motion's not going through until you hear from Driscoll, a motion to have a hearing officer's testimony on record? Can that be put on a motion tonight? This hearing officer? I guess that's Chief Devine, correct? All right, so if a motion can be put up by...
I think that was turned into the clerk.
By one of you guys here tonight, and we at least get it on the record, what's going on here. But, you know, I said it, I don't know, it was a year ago now, a witch hunt, or whatever? You know, we've read recently what other stuff that some of the police officers have done at this police department, and we haven't prosecuted or gone after them. And, you know, I'm lost for words here, ladies and gentlemen. Lost in, it's, his pocketbook is decreasing, township pocketbook is decreasing, and it's very, very sad. And the whole state is knowing about this, who's involved in it. I get phone calls from people I didn't know throughout the state, from Bergen County down to Camp May. You know, we've had people come up here testify at the pension hearing, they said, "You should be ashamed of yourself how you're going after this man," and every court case, and I only went to one, something about a gun, I don't know if it was a concealed weapon or just getting a gun permit, this former police officer, captain, is winning on every side. So, you know, how this all started and why, like I said, a witch hunt, vendetta, try to get something, we all know what was going on here. Like I said, it's a real shame, and people, some people should be very, very ashamed of themselves, and I hope they have their just day. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Masmer. Before the next person comes up, I have a question. Roy, you had mentioned something about taxes, and I remember reading somewhere that as regards to Aurora, they were charging us taxes, and Mr. Inglesino, I believe your firm was looking into that matter?
It was resolved.
Was that resolved?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
We're tax exempt.
Because we are tax exempt, but were they charging us tax on the bill?
That was deducted in offset.
It was all cleared up.
So initially, they were charging us taxes?
Yes.
And that's been cleared up since then?
It's been cleared up, a long time ago.
Yeah, a long time ago.
And we've been made whole for that?
Yeah.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Mary Przycki, 273 Marcela Road again. This Aurora, I understand that they were suspended from practicing in the state of New Jersey, is that correct?
Well, something else bizarre happened, yes.
Okay.
They didn't have a business registration.
From 2014 to 2015?
Yes.
And yet, we indirectly, sort of like, paid them, and we trusted their facts when they were on suspension? Wasn't there any review on their company procedure, or, you know, like you have to show credentials if you apply for a job? How come that didn't happen?
Well, Mary, the contract did not come to council for approval.
Right, no, but I'm saying, all along, they, you know, somebody should have questioned their facts if they were suspended. Nobody knew about it, and yet we paid them. I just can't believe that one. But I do believe this Karifi case has gone far enough. I mean, it's cost the taxpayers money, it cost him money, and it's always in a deadlock. Just bury it already. I mean, it's gone on too long, and I think there's been a lot of injustice done here and a lot of animosity, and it's time to end it. It's time to end it. If they say, "Pay him, pay him," because that's what he deserves. He deserves to be treated just like any other equal employee of this township. So I think that should happen. The one question I do have is BT Properties Urban Renewal Company LLC, this long-term tax exemption, who are they?
UPS.
UPS?
It's an affiliate of UPS.
How come we're gonna give them UPS? They make a lot of money. How come we're giving them a long-term tax exemption?
All right, so, yeah, so UPS has their computer operations right now in Paramus. UPS was making a corporate decision as to whether or not they were going to stay in New Jersey, or whether or not they were going to relocate that facility and its 1,000 high-paying jobs to Atlanta, Georgia, Marietta, Georgia. They applied to the state of New Jersey for Grow New Jersey grant, which is actually a tax credit, and in that application, they clearly indicated that in order for them to make the decision to stay in New Jersey, they would need two things. Number one, they would need to get the grant from New Jersey, and they would need a pilot payment arrangement with the township of Parsippany Troy Hills, because they had located the property at, I think it's Fort, it was a campus, Fort Corporate, Marsh Corporate Center.
Yeah, Marsh Corporate.
As their site. So they were awarded the New Jersey grant from Grow New Jersey, which was good, and the township is in the process of considering a payment in lieu of tax agreement with UPS. Now, under the law, they can't do it to UPS, under the law, it has to be an urban renewal entity. And there is a redevelopment process that the township is required to go through, which it did. Declare the area in need of redevelopment, adopt the redevelopment plan, certain steps that are required to take, which the township did over the course of time. And now, in order to keep UPS in New Jersey and to facilitate their move to Parsippany, the township has to consider a payment in lieu of tax agreement that would have to be approved in this calendar year, which is the reason why there is a special meeting scheduled for December 29th. And at that meeting, we will describe to the public what the terms are, the financial terms of that pilot agreement, financial agreement.
So we get tax money or not indirectly?
You always get the land tax, okay? And then what you get on top of the land tax is what they call a payment in lieu of taxes, which, again, not everybody can do. You have to have property that's actually declared in need of redevelopment in order to qualify for that.
Isn't there litigation with UPS and the...
No.
That's been settled?
The litigation with UPS and SJP Properties has been settled.
Okay. And 1515 Route 10, what is that? Is that Dilogic?
Yes.
Yes.
Intel Dilogic building, yes.
So what are you gonna do, knock the building down?
Actually, the project is gonna be coming there, hopefully, I think it will be, it will be great for the town, if in fact, you know, there's plans that are moving forward with that, too.
And we're gonna put residential on Route 10?
They are proposing a mixed-use project for that site, which will include residential and commercial, sort of like a mini-town center, and that plan is under consideration, and again, I think it's lumped into the overall discussion about affordable housing.
It's amazing what developers are gonna do to the state of New Jersey and this township when it comes to...
30 seconds, Mary.
The affordable housing, I mean, they are, we are at their mercy, and that is absolutely ridiculous.
Well, you can thank the New Jersey State Supreme Court for that.
Yeah, and a couple of other politicians I got on the top of my head, Democrats and big-time Republicans.
I'm sorry, as you can see, I've been taking notes, so let me try to find what I want to say to you. In regards to Mr. Karifi, I had gone to court cases prior and was witness to the fact that most of his things have been dropped, he's been completely exonerated. I've asked for this to be taken care of many times. When you did that resolution that night, and we questioned it later on, we asked why it never came back to the council, because you're the ones that have to vote on it, why it never got to you? Why does the administration hold everything back from the council? Just because they want to? I mean, come on, this is getting ridiculous. The taxpayers are carrying this burden. The longer it goes on, the more broke every taxpayer in Parsippany is going to be. And what is this for? A witch hunt? Now, give me a moment, please. I agree with the Aurora, with the billing, the way it was billed, now I know why they accepted $250,000 as opposed to $800,000. When that was said back when, I'm sitting there going, "What company would ever decrease a payment that much without something being wrong in between there?" Okay? We're using a company that was suspended. John or his office should have been on top of that. Another failure through the attorneys. I ask this council, you have an emergency meeting, which I was gonna ask about, on 12/29 regarding the urban. To me, it's more of an emergency to get Mr. Driscoll here on that date and get those answered, those questions answered. Get him here. He works for us. He is our township attorney. If you request it and he denies it, fine, let him deny it. Let the taxpayers know that his firm really does not care about Parsippany, because he cannot come here and respond. We've been waiting since September for Robert to get an answer from him regarding the two I feel bad for Mr. James Karifi. I feel bad for his family, his wife, his children, for what he has had to put up with, for what expenses he has gone without. It doesn't just affect James, it affects his whole family. His mother, his father, his brother, who sits here and cannot say a word, and thank God, he follows the rules for that. But it affects everybody. It affects the township, because we look like a bunch of morons. Now, you were so quick to put a resolution together, or an ordinance, I'm not sure which it is anymore, to reimburse Mayor Barbario and Brian Stanton for their $5,000 in legal fees when they were accused of something. I remind you now that you paid them. The resolution was done, I think, in October that year. You paid them for expenses that they received prior to the resolution even being in effect, and I questioned that at that time. Why are you paying them for something to happen prior to our resolution coming into effect? Whoops, out that one. That's a disgrace. You gave $10,000 of the taxpayers' money out to me wrongly, because it was done prior to the date of our resolution, our resolution. It was effective in October, and their expenses were prior May. These are just little things in between. Um, oh God, my notes are so bad, sorry.
30 seconds.
Yeah, 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 yeah. I see no reason why we will not settle this now. We have to stop. You want to keep businesses in Parsippany? At the rate we're going, you're gonna have no taxpayers to be going to these businesses at the rate we're spending money. James, we have to reimburse him his legal fees, we have to give him what is owed to him by the Police Department. He gave us his services all those years, and I would stand up for any cop that did that, and I have stood up for the cops, policemen.
Ken, I just want to do a follow-up with one or two things, because Mrs....
Hold her, she's done, right?
She's done.
Well, no, but, you know...
Yeah, time's up.
Got many more, but...
Mrs. Przycki, burp also. You know, what's going on here, I really truly don't want to be dealing with this anymore, but at the end of the day, we have to deal with the budget. And what's disturbing to me is this, okay, particular company Aurora, they didn't have their license obviously validated for over a year and a half, shame on them. So now, when you...
Shame on our attorney.
So, now, I'm not gonna pick on John right now.
I can.
We're gonna peel the onion, right? But what was more damaging was the testimony that a federal judge said about this guy's credibility.
Mm-hmm.
Because if that was a police officer on a stand, and obviously, he had some improprieties, now, he has to testify, and those improprieties are to come out. So if that federal lawsuit and that judge's decision, I think of the Southern District, and I heard he's a very reputable judge, right? We might have had a whole different look at how we would have handled Aurora. We might have been using another company. As a matter of fact, I recommended just use the Morris County Prosecutor's Office, because I truly mean this, I plan on, with the committee as a whole, subpoenaing Aurora Company to be here, and I want answers from them. I'm not gonna pick on John or our mayor, because I truly believe our mayor got taken advantage of.
Oh, I do, too.
I really do, too. I just believe that he's in between a rock and a hard place, and I believe he got taken advantage of. And I want this guy explain in detail how he came up with an $800,000 bill, even though we are only paying him $300,000, which I find it hard to believe, but I want him to tell us in great detail, because I did my due diligence with many other folks that do this for a living, and they say, you know what they say? This is a crime. So, once New Year goes by, he will be subpoenaed, and he's gonna go in great detail, because you know what it is? All the other stuff is coming out about James accessing the server, the whole nine yards, it came out to a bunch of hogwash. So I want Aurora, because I truly believe his credibility is zero in front of the township eyes. So, you're right, we don't want to be dealing with this, but I'll be honest with you, I want our money back.
So do I.
I want it back.
That was the next question. Can we sue back?
And who will be subpoenaed, and that'll be on record? Who'll be subpoenaed?
And as a matter of fact, you're right, I did have the word credible here, that they found him credible.
Time.
Not credible, which I find our attorneys not credible at this time.
Yep.
Thank you.
Guys, come back here. Yeah. Ain't going away.
Nicholas Homiak, Lake Hiawatha. I just wanted to throw something into the mix about Captain Karifi. I thought it was strange, when I read the article, that this Aurora business partner was from England, because if you recall, Parsippany had these rogue phone calls that were taking place in the Sewerage Department, and we were billed, I don't know, was it $38,000? I forget.
Half a million dollars.
All right, half a million dollars, and...
And Aurora is the expert that we hired that uncovered that crime and helped the township recoup that money back.
And one of the calls and the partner, on low and behold, is his partners in England. An awful lot of them calls were from England that brought Aurora into the town...
No, no, Aurora, we brought Aurora into the town after, when it was uncovered, when we learned that we were being billed a half a million dollars because of a foreign criminal enterprise that was hacking into our phone system, charging long-term, long-distance calls at a half a million dollars. Aurora was brought in to, I mean, a lot of things that have said have just been...
All right, but Aurora...
That is just, I mean, come on.
Was soliciting business, they were desperate for business.
No, 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 Mr. Homiak.
It seems like...
Aurora, listen, you know, Aurora was not soliciting business. Aurora was brought in as our expert in that case, and they recouped over half a million dollars for the township. Now, you know, the principal, Mr. Ferente, worked in counterterrorism and counter-cyberterrorism branches of the United States Secret Service, where he has led investigations into high-profile breaches of government cybersecurity. Aurora, to this day, maintains the highest levels of security clearance, performs network and systems security analysis and testing for major world banks, including Barclays...
And they couldn't get Captain Karifi's file, even though there's a backup in the Police Department? Come on, I mean, it's really, it's a sham. And I would be, you know, where's the FBI when you need them? Hey, if I was, yeah, really, I'm not kidding.
Nick, I would just say to this, obviously, all those kudos, he didn't retire from the Secret Service, and, you know, when they say sometimes people go to the dark side, well, I'd like to see him give us some light and day here on the $800,000 that he billed us. So that's what I want to hear from him.
Read Ian Fleming, that James Bond and how Spectre and all these organizations and organizations, it's all coming true. Anyway, I want to switch the subject. I don't see any reason for any pride, and I wish Mr. DiPiero was here, because I wanted to address him, because he says, "Waterview doesn't have to worry about public housing." I can't emphasize the fact enough that they never would have to recognize, be recognized for a possible site for public housing. Once again, we refuse conformance, memorandum of understanding, it's still in standing, in good standing, with municipalities in conformance. You read this over, environmentally sensitive lands would not fall, for example, Waterview, to public housing. Their standards are even higher than regular development.
Here's the complete...
Here's the complete 90-page consistency report that would have saved it. Mayor Barbario, at the end of that meeting, when the success for everybody, and they said no to the developer, he promised 26 acres, then he never activated the open space committee, and he, and he never acted the environmental committee. He didn't do anything. We let it fall under a false pretext because it was, it would not be eligible for affordable housing. Nothing to take pride in. We did a favor for a developer, for a private entity, over our own community. We betrayed that immediate neighborhood and ourselves, because we're adding things that we don't need. We don't need more retail. And that man Steve here, when he talks about the POD zone, it's funny, that was the only zone zoned for floor space. And it was zoned, and here's the Troy Book Report, you can find Waterview right here. And it emphasizes its importance in the biodiversity of that landscape and the Troy Brook watershed and everything else. So this whole COA thing is a hoax. It's not a draconian thing. They don't just march into your town and say, "We're gonna put public housing anywhere we feel like." Persipony allowed it to happen. They allowed it to happen. And if I was the man from Mars, or the man from the Earth, I wouldn't be able to tell the difference between our planning board attorney and the RD people. In fact, the RD guy only showed up the one time. It was supposed to be for upscale divorcees. They were gonna have their little apartment over there. And whatever happened to that? Whatever happened to that? And then our planning board took RD's place and did all their advocating for him. Nothing to be proud of. And if Mr. DiPiero or the mayor wants to believe that they saved that neighborhood from public housing, they're fooling themselves. And it's a, it's a sin that that landscape's gonna fall. And I'll end it at that. But, yeah, where's the FBI when you need them?
Good evening, Ken Dolsky, 21 Winfield Drive, Persipony. And now for something completely different. I wanted to bring you up to date on what's going on with the Pilgrim Pipeline. I had sent Ellen a letter. I'm not sure whether she shared this information with, with any of you. Pilgrim filed in November in New York for their permits, and said that they're gonna file in New Jersey before the end of the year. A lot of the permits that they're filing, a lot of the permits that they're filing for, within the DEP, have a 90-day clock on them. So things are gonna happen pretty quickly once, once they file. I wanted to make you aware also that there is a municipal meeting that's being sponsored by the mayor of Florham Park on December 16. Ellen is going, excuse me, Ellen is going to attend. And any of you are welcome to attend as well. The two topics that you're gonna hear talked about are, one, our strategy for fighting Pilgrim at the DEP. And second, the towns are gonna talk about the legal strategy, sharing potential legal expenses, and basically getting their act together, understanding what's gonna happen in the next 90 to 100 days, or 90 to 120 days. So I'll give the clerks some information on the meeting, and you can respond back to Mayor Taylor, who's the mayor of Florham Park. And you can attend, see what, see what the thinking is amongst all the other towns. Most of them have passed ordinances, very, very similar to the one that's been, been passed here. And again, you can see how they're gonna proceed. And, and by the way, I know there's been a lot of talk about money, but both the, the strategy to fight Pilgrim at the DEP, and then, of course, you know, at the fall, if we lose there, if we win there, then, then basically, we're done. If we lose there, and it has to go to court, both of those strategies are gonna, are gonna cost some money. But the good news is, if you wanna look at it this way, is that you've got a lot of other towns in the same boat, and hopefully, you can share expenses and, and share legal expertise. Last thing I'll just mention very quickly is, we received a letter from PSENG. We asked them again about their position, which is that they would not allow Pilgrim to use the right-of-way. And they said, yes. We refuse them because we wanna be able to provide additional services to customers in the future. And they've already got a gas line on one side of their power lines, and they didn't want an oil line on the other side. They said, however, we recognize that Pilgrim does have legal remedies that they can try, in the form of trying to get eminent domain, which we think will be difficult, but they can try, in which case PSENG is not gonna be able to stop them. And second, PSENG in the letter said that after they go through the DEP process, PSENG is gonna look at how that went, and what the DEP recommends, or what the DEP finds, as well as whatever the state officials have to say about the project, implying that they might change their minds in the future if they think that it's in their best interest. So I just wanted to make the point that even though it's great that they have, they have refused so far, and continue to refuse Pilgrim access to the, the property that they would like to use, for the most part, through Persipony. There is a, a stretch where they plan to deviate from that, but basically, that's the bulk of where they would go in Persipony. It's not bulletproof, and it's not forever. So just have to keep that in mind. All right? Any questions? I hope some of you can attend the, the meeting in Florham Park.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the update.
I have a question. Did that letter that was sent to Ellen have the details of the meeting in it?
Yes.
Okay.
And I have a handout here that has the details.
Okay.
I have several copies.
Oh, good.
Let the clerk make copies.
Yes, that'd be great.
Thank you.
That'd be great, thank.
It says, letting sentence, I was there last night, and they said they're already penned, so we get it, just press up letting sentence, ready.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so no one else come forward, entertain a motion to close the public hearing?
Make motion.
Motion made by Mr. Valori, seconded by Mr. Stanton. Roll call.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
Mr. Krefi?
Yes. This time I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Make motion.
Motion made by Mr. Valori.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Paluso. Roll call.
Mr. Paluso?
Yes.
Mr. Stanton?
Yes.
Mr. Valori?
Yes.
And Mr. Krefi?
Yes. Good night, everyone.
Happy Heineken, everyone.